Hi, good evening and welcome to tonight's School Board Candidate Forum for Cedar Falls. My name is Katie Orlando. I'm the Chief Executive Officer of Big Brothers Big Sisters of Northeast Iowa, and it's my pleasure tonight to moderate this forum. With us, we have five candidates who will get to talk a little bit more in a minute. The candidates joining us tonight are Joyce Coyle, Eric Giddens, Jim Moody, Jeff Orvis, and Sasha Welpert. The agenda for the forum this evening will be as follows. Our candidates will each have two minutes to give opening remarks. I then will ask two questions to candidates, and they will have two minutes to respond. The audience here with us tonight, thank you for joining us, has had a chance to write down questions for our candidates. If you have not yet done so, I'm sure that there will be someone able to pass around a slip of paper for you to write your question down on, and we'll be asking audience member questions. And then at the end, we'll have a chance for our candidates to close. We have a timekeeper here with us tonight. She will be timing our candidates to make sure they each have the same amount of time to respond. The 20-minute yellow piece of paper will mark 20 seconds left, not 20 minutes. And red means stop. You know, we only have two hours for this forum, so 20 minutes would be quite the night. So without further ado, I would like to open up the floor to the candidates and give their opening remarks. So we'll start with Sasha and work our way down.
Okay, good evening, and thank you, thank you for the sponsors of this forum for giving us this opportunity, and to those of you who are volunteering your time to be here this evening. I am deeply honored to be considered for this position and to be running with this panel of really highly qualified colleagues, so thank you. My family and I have been in Cedar Falls for just over two years now. We're relative newcomers, and one of the things that we've been most impressed with as we've been here is the commitment of this community to high-quality education. And it's something that's very near and dear to both of us. I've spent my 20-year career in education, first as a nonprofit educator in the nonprofit sector, and then as a high school teacher in science, and then as a university instructor before moving here. So it's something that's very near and dear to me, resonates with me. I believe that education is the heart of a community. So if I am chosen to be on the board, I would bring a fresh perspective as somebody relatively new to this area and who has experience in teaching. I don't have any direct ties to any one particular school. I don't have children in the school district, so I would think of all children as all of my children and be able to represent equally everywhere. And I would commit my time and energy to listening, to listening to the teachers and the students, the families, the community members, to make sure that I'm representing the students the best that I can in this role. So, thank you.
Great, thank you Sasha. Jeff, your opening remarks.
I'm Jeff Orvis. I'm a teacher at Waverly Shell Rock. I'm also an instructional coach. I've been a Cedar Falls resident since 1990. My wife is a Waterloo native, and we've sent two of our children through Cedar Falls schools and have been very happy with the quality of education that they received. As my role at Waverly Shell Rock, I'm a math teacher, I'm a computer programming teacher, I'm also an instructional coach, and I manage our school information system, a little smaller school. We get to divvy up our jobs, so everybody gets to do a little bit of everything. One of the reasons I'm running, I am, as Sasha said, very pleased with Cedar Falls schools. I think they've been well-managed over the years, and I think we should be very proud of the quality of education that we give our students. And I want to make sure that that continues. As a teacher, someone who's in the classroom every day, I do want to bring that perspective to the board, too. Sometimes it's easy to make a decision and not realize what the impact with that would be in a typical classroom. I am an active ISCE member. I've been elected as our local president and regional president, and I'm currently serving on the Compensation and Education Leadership Council for the state. And I had an opportunity to read quite a few reviews, schools' plans for the teacher leadership initiative. And it's been amazing, the quality of schools and the work that teachers do in Iowa and administrators and support staff. And I still believe that Cedar Falls can do better still. So I want to be that voice for our staff, and I want to make sure that we attract and retain the highest-quality people that we possibly can. Thank you.
Great, thank you Jeff for joining us. Candidate Jim Moody.
My name is Jim Moody. I am a third-generation resident of Cedar Falls, raising the fourth. I have two students in the district, one at Lincoln Elementary. My oldest son is splitting time between homes and the high school. My wife has been a teacher for 21 years in the district. I am committed to this community. I always have been. Most of my adult life, I have served on some boards, some committee, be it Planning and Zoning, be it Friends of Hospice, be it the CF Proud, be it PTA President, you know, many different capacities. Through those opportunities and boards, I have learned that collaboration is key. Cedar Falls has a longstanding tradition of excellence in our education system. What I look to bring to the table is a perspective of collaboration and working together as a group to continue that tradition of excellence, and that education is a cornerstone of the community and continues to be. And through the growth that Cedar Falls is and has and will continue to experience, we need to continue to grow as a district, and not only from a facility standpoint, but from a teaching and growth perspective. You know, are we administering to our students the best ways we possibly can? And are our students getting the best information and the best education that we can give them? And as a school board member, that would be my goal, would be to work together with the current board members, people that are sitting up here, to continue that tradition and bring an outside perspective to it. So, thank you, everyone. Thank you to the League of Women Voters, the other candidates that are here, the people in the audience, and the people at home watching.
Thank you, Jim. Candidate Eric Giddens, your opening remarks.
Okay, thank you. I'm Eric Giddens. I'd first like to thank the League of Women Voters, the Cedar Falls Education Association, Cedar Falls Association of Education Support Personnel, all for hosting this event. It is an honor to be up here with these other highly qualified candidates and to run alongside you, so I appreciate this opportunity. I am an educator. I taught for three years in the Cedar Falls School District. I taught math at Pete Junior High for three years, from 2009 to 2012. Also had teaching experience at an international school, the American School of Tegucigalpa in Honduras, for two years following that. I now am a program manager at the Center for Energy and Environmental Education at U&amp;I. I work with students at the college level to get them engaged in working with communities, specifically local governments, to develop energy plans, to make more energy-efficient communities that use less energy, spend less money on energy, and reduce our environmental impact through those energy plans. So, this is a unique set of qualifications. Prior to teaching, I had academic and professional background and experience in engineering and community development. So I really understand the connection between education and building strong communities. And that's kind of the nexus of those two things is where my interest really lies. And I'm interested in doing all that I can to support this community that I call home and have for the last 11 years, to continue that tradition of excellence that others have talked about. We do have a wonderful school system. Students have excelled highly through their experiences here, but I don't think we can rest on our laurels. I think that we have to continue to work hard and support public education here locally. I feel like I have a unique set of experience and qualifications to do that. One primary thing I'd like to say is that I believe in bringing the community together through face-to-face communication, being out there, talking to people, meeting with people, knocking on doors. That's something that I'd like to do. I feel like we do have divisions in the community that could be healed through some community development processes that bring us together to find common solutions, and I'm interested in working on that. So, thank you for, again, for hosting us.
Great, thank you Eric. And candidate Joyce Coyle, your opening remarks.
Good evening. I'd like to thank, my name is Joyce Coyle, and I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for having us, along with the Cedar Falls Education Association and the Cedar Falls Association of Support Personnel. Also like to thanks Channel 15 for having us, for the audience, and for everyone that's at home tonight, watching this, and being an active participant in this election process. I've been married for 35 years to my husband, Dave. We have two grown children and six grandchildren, three of them that right now live in Germany, and the other three live in Adel, Iowa, and the first kindergarten student going to Adel Membrin, help me, DeSoto, I think. Sorry, she's going to be disappointed that I didn't know that. Right now, I work for Dr. Mark Tunell at Cedar Valley Dental Associates, and I'm also the Hospice Development Coordinator for the Allen Foundation. I look forward to our discussion this evening because I am committed to education, and I feel like I know the difference between what a quality education could do for our students and what it has for their impact in their lives. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Now, we have two pre-written questions from our sponsors that we'll go ahead and ask the candidates now. So our first question, what should be done to close the achievement gap? And we'll start with Joyce and work our way back down. So Joyce, you have two minutes to reply.
First, when I started thinking about this, I came up with three things that I thought were the most important, and then my three things expanded to four things, and then five things. But the first thing that I thought about was the classroom teacher, and how the classroom teacher affects the quality of education with our students. They are the ones that touch our students every single day. And I feel Cedar Falls Community School District has done an amazing job placing well-qualified educators in our classrooms. So that's the first thing. The second thing that I was thinking about is the time that we give our educators to collaborate with professional learning communities. We give our educators time and opportunity to, every week, to spend time together, to talk about our students, to look at the data, to really, really drill down to that next level, to make sure that our students are getting what they need. I feel our students know, excuse me, our educators know our students better now than they have ever known them before. If you've known a family member, maybe that has an individual education plan or an IEP, I feel like our students, because of professional learning communities, are almost getting that individualized instruction by the conversations that they're having during that PLC time. My third thing is the instructional coaches. I feel that the instructional coaches that we have had for the last year and a half, it's been the instructional coach's responsibility to bring evidence-based practices into the classroom. And it's that relationship that the instructional coaches have with the teachers and their team that just actually enhances the benefit of the educational structure in the classroom.
Great, thank you Joyce. Eric, what are your thoughts on what should be done to close the achievement gap?
Well, I kind of like Joyce. I had about four things that I need to squeeze into two minutes here, so. The first thing I just want to say really briefly is that Cedar Falls does a really good job. We, generally speaking, have very high achievement, and I think we need to celebrate that. I think that that's something that we need to start from. Then the second thing is that I'd like to talk about the difference, you know, really briefly, the difference between proficiency and growth. This is a discussion in education that's very important because if we talk about closing achievement gaps based on proficiency, proficiency is a level that in some ways is almost arbitrary. And we're looking at students that are above that or below that level. If we had a student that was already proficient and then showed increases, are we capturing any growth? What if they were way up high and then they actually decreased but are still proficient? According to those data, they still look like they're doing a great job, but they actually decreased in growth. So we really need to pay attention to growth. We need to look at where students start and then where they wind up at the beginning and end of the school year to really understand fully the picture of like achievement. So, that's an important point, and I just want to point out that that's backed up by research. I've got a report here, legislative report on closing the achievement gap. This is published every year by the Iowa Department of Education, and that's one of the things that they say in that report. The third thing, briefly here, in the time that I have, is that we really need to support our teachers. I might not get to my fourth thing, but the third thing is super important. Supporting our teachers and supporting the environment that they have to work in is supporting our students, and we need to understand that connection. We can't do enough to make our teachers go into the classroom every day feeling super confident and supported by the administration and the community. So, I'll get to the fourth one some other time. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim, what are your thoughts on this question?
When I looked at the word "achievement" in this question, it's tough because there are a lot of measurements to achievement. When you look at the Cedar Falls Education System's track record, last year, we achieved one of our highest ACT composite scores ever of 24 and a half. We've got 55% of our teachers in the classroom that have master's degrees. We have an extremely high four-year college rate. We have an extremely high graduation rate, which are all great accolades, but to echo a little bit what Eric said, achievement is many different things. Our CAPS program contributes to it. Our Leader in Me program contributes to it. Technical programs can contribute to it. You know, students achieve at different levels, and I think that Eric said a very important word is growth. We want all of our students to grow and progress in not only the learning opportunities that we offer them, but also in how to be an effective citizen of our community or whatever community that they go on to live in. And we're not only educating our students on the books, but also how to be a good person and how to contribute to society in a positive way. You know, achievement has many different benchmarks. My level of achievement is different than Eric's, it is different than Joyce's. And in every household and every family, achievement is seen as growth and progression. And I think through our teachers, who are extremely qualified, and making sure that all of our students are getting some level of differentiation in the classroom, so that they do achieve to a level of growth, and I think that's what we need to strive for.
Great, thank you very much. Jeff, what are your thoughts on the question?
Well, the math teacher in me says that one of the first things you have to do when you look at a problem like the achievement gap is define it. And one of the things that seems to be the best indicator for achievement differences between students seems to be the social background that they have as a student. And there are some supports that we have to fill in. There are parents that just aren't able to manage some of those things. We have parents that are working late-night jobs, two jobs, and they can't always give those social supports that they need for students. One of the first things we talk about as educators are the basic needs. If you have a student that's coming in hungry, or tired, or just is not getting the emotional support that they need, there is not going to be a good chance that they're going to be doing any learning. And some of these are not problems, obviously, that a school can handle on its own, but there are a lot of things we can do. A simple study out recently talked about why so many children of poverty are behind in education. One of the simple reasons is their family had to choose between food and rent or a pair of glasses for their student. And I think those are some of the things that we can do as a school board, is help to encourage ways that we can find some of those supports for students. Lunch programs, after-school programs, those kind of things. But I would also say that this is not an easy problem. If it were, there wouldn't be an achievement gap. I mean, we would have solved the problem already. We already have very good-quality people. We need to have situations where we have a trusting adult that a student can go to, whether it's a support staff, whether it's a counselor, a teacher, administrator. We do need to have good staff in our schools that will provide those social supports that our students need.
Great, thank you very much. Sasha, what are your thoughts? How should we go about closing the achievement gap?
Okay, so I'm going to kind of play off of you. This is nice to be at the end because then I get to pick up where people left off. So, I agree that Cedar Falls is doing some really amazing things already to address the needs of all students. And when I visited principals this summer, one of, this was a reoccurring theme, right? The need to make sure that students are being challenged and given opportunities to succeed, while at the same time not leaving anybody behind in terms of their understanding of what's happening in the classroom or in the instruction that's going on. And so some of the things that are already being implemented, like the professional learning communities, right, which provides teachers with an opportunity to come together and talk about what's working, what's not working, what could be done better. Providing time in the school day for kids to get help that they need or enrichment that they need, you know, and those times are carved out and everybody takes them. And that helps to reduce the stigma associated, you know, for kids that have additional challenges perhaps in their home life, there is oftentimes a stigma attached to getting that additional help. So reducing that, offering peer mentorship programs or peer support networks, you know, that make everybody operating together as a team. I think that, you know, one of the things that I've observed about the schools in Cedar Falls is that they really do work hard to achieve a community atmosphere. So everybody is working together within that community. And that's from the person at the front desk who sees the parents and the students as they come in, to the teachers, to the paraeducators, to the person in the lunchroom. Everybody is involved in this culture of support while at the same time promoting academic rigor, right? And so when you combine those things, you get growth in your students, which is the goal.
Great, thank you Sasha, and thank you candidates for your responses to the first question. We'll move on to the second question, which is, what would you do to inform the public about the quality of our schools? And we'll go ahead and start with Jim for this one.
That's not fair.
It's my job.
You know, in today's society, information is everywhere. Today, we, for example, we had input conferences, and at my youngest son's input conference, the teacher was telling us about three new ways to get information of what's going on in the classroom. You know, there's a lot of, the district has social media sites. Each school's have social media sites. Grade levels have social media sites. Individual teachers have social media sites. So there's opportunities there to gain information. But a little bit back to what Eric touched on earlier, the best way to get quality information and get information about what's going on from the schools is ask. Ask the teachers, ask the administrators, search out a school board member, and ask the questions. Get involved. You know, as, from my years on serving on PTAs, the best way to know what's going on in the schools is to get in the schools. Volunteer, spend time in your students' classrooms. If you don't have students in the district, it's okay. We'll still let you volunteer because those kids love to have father figures, mother figures, grandparent figures come into the classrooms, read books to them, help them out. You know, that's the best way to figure out what's going on in our schools, and that's what I would encourage people to learn about in our district, is to get involved. Because we have open, welcome buildings and open and welcome staff that want help. And if you want quality information, if you want to know what's going on in our buildings, get involved at that level.
Great, thank you very much. Jeff, we'll pass it to you. What would you do to inform the public about the quality of our schools?
One of the problems we have as teachers sometimes is we don't blow our own horn occasionally. And a lot of times, we feel like maybe we weren't the first person to try this method or something that's a little bit creative in a classroom, and we're a little bit embarrassed or don't want to open up to other people and show them exactly what we're doing in a classroom. But from what I've seen as an instructional coach, I'm amazed at some of the things that our staff in Waverly Shell Rock, and I get a chance to see some staff, what they're doing in Cedar Falls, and it's incredible, but we aren't very good at encouraging our staff to broadcast that a little bit. Jim mentioned about the teachers having social media, and many of them do, but it almost gets watered down, it's so diluted because we have so many different channels that we do this on. But I do agree that inviting people into our schools, and I do think Cedar Falls are very welcoming schools, and if you reach out and ask, you will be invited into those schools. And I do welcome those people to come in. But we do need to be better as a staff at saying, yes, what I'm doing is effective and what I'm doing is helping our students. And that would probably be the place that I would start, is ask our staff to reach out to parents, to grandparents, to community leaders, and bring them into our classrooms and show them what's going on. What may look commonplace to us looks unique to other people who are not in that situation. I think people would be amazed how much school is different than it was when they graduated a few years ago. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Joyce, your response to our current question?
Well, we've been fortunate because two or three years ago, we hired Janelle Darst, and she is our Public Relations and Media Coordinator. She has a different title than that, it's Communication and Community Relations. But when we hired her, she really helped us pull it all together. She ended up, she goes into building, she takes pictures, she posts it on our Facebook page, she keeps our district website up to date. She totally revamped a very antiquated district website and brought it up to where we need it to be right now in Cedar Falls. And so you can go to our website and you can find things. And she is out in the community promoting Cedar Falls Community School District and what we do in our buildings. And I think as a board member, I think when we are out and we talk about what we are doing in the district and we share the stories, when an article is written in the Waterloo Cedar Falls Courier, that's a different form of media. Not everyone goes to Facebook, not everyone tweets. I don't tweet often, but I do have a Facebook page, but I do know that we have great articles and great stories that are written in the Courier. KWWL will pick up on some of our stories. Don't be afraid, like Jim said, to get involved in the classroom. Go in as just a reading buddy and be willing to sit down in the classroom and read to our students. That's one of the best ways that you can learn what's going on in our buildings, is just being inside of our buildings and being close to where those kids, children are being educated.
Great, thank you Joyce. Sasha, your response to, what would you do to inform the public about the quality of our schools?
Well, as a board member, I would look forward to getting into the schools and spending time there myself, so that I could experience firsthand what's happening and visit with the educators that are there and the students that are there, and maybe the parents that are volunteering or that are there as well. One of the things that has been the most valuable to me in this process of running for school board has been visiting with people, whether it be knocking on doors and hearing from people, or at meet-and-greets, or, you know, various other one, face-to-face opportunities that I've had to visit with folks. I've learned a lot. I've learned what people are thinking, I've learned what they appreciate, what they love about the district, I've learned concerns that people have. And I think that, you know, that being out there and having these conversations with people is very, very important. And so that would be one thing I would look forward to, like Eric said, getting out and continuing to meet with people, having forums, having opportunities for people to ask questions and to have conversations. And listening, listening to what's going on and what the concerns are. And then my other point was visiting with Janelle Darst and working with her on finding additional ways of reaching out to the public. You know, there are a lot of people who aren't on the social media platforms, and so what are other ways that we could reach people that would be effective, that would not only allow us to share information, but would also allow us to get information, you know, hear from people about their concerns? So, that's what I would do.
Okay, thank you Sasha. And Eric, your response to, what would you do to inform the public about the quality of our schools?
Okay, well, I just first want to say, want to note again that I taught in the district for a while, so I feel like I have a strong understanding of what the quality of our schools are and what we're doing to create good-quality education for our students. Joyce mentioned earlier the PLC process, and she gave a good description of Joyce mentioned earlier the PLC process and she gave a good description of that. I was involved in the district when we were transitioning to a professional model, professional learning community. So I saw firsthand the before and the after during that process or really have seen what it's done for what I call instructional and curricular equity in this district. Now we can really be assured that a second grader in this building is getting the same thing that a second grader in another building or my ninth grade algebra class at Pete is getting the same thing that a ninth grade algebra class at home. So I understand those issues. And another thing is that I'm, in terms of informing the public, I am very interested and I very much enjoy talking to people, you know, engaging people. So I've been out knocking on doors. I've knocked on over 500 doors in the last four weeks. I wish I had time to get to more, but I've had wonderful conversations with people. And as I've done that, I've thought about, you know, we do this to, during election time, to try to get elected, but maybe we could go out and do that more, you know, when we're not in campaign mode. Maybe we could have face-to-face conversations throughout the year so that we really get a sense of what the community's thinking, as Sasha said, but we also have an opportunity to share what's going on in our schools, one-on-one with members of the community. So that's something that I really like doing. I really enjoy that. And I feel like it's also something that can help bring our community together to tackle some of the issues that we may be facing in the coming years. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you Eric. Now we're on to the part of our forum where the audience has written questions that they would like to hear the responses of our candidates. And we have a handful of questions. If anyone who came in later would like to submit a question, feel free to do so and one of our volunteers will walk around and collect it from you. But to start, we have a handful of questions. The first question for the candidates, how many years have you each served on the Cedar Falls School Board? So we'll start with Joyce and just work our way down. You can have two minutes to respond if you would like.
I don't need two years. Two minutes. Two years.
Two years, twenty minutes.
I've been on the board twenty, this is my 25th year serving on the board. And I am running this time to fill a vacancy. So I am running for, to fill a vacancy that, because Dr. Jim Kenyon resigned from the board and so I'm going to finish out his two-year term.
Great. We'll just keep going down the line.
The math teacher in me says I've served negative one-twelfth year. By starting next month, that's, so I haven't been on the board yet, but I'm looking forward to it. I'd love to be. So was that, that was the whole question?
Yeah. I guess if anyone else would like to share some transferable experience too, if you have not yet had the opportunity to serve on a school board before, but.
Well, I've been involved recently with some discussions with the facilities committee. You know, facilities is one of the big issues that the district's dealing with. And so that's a real interest of mine and I have been involved with that. While I was a teacher, I sat on the district technology committee. So we had meetings to talk about technology in the schools and all that. So those weren't board positions, but they were positions associated with committees at the district level, so.
Great. Thank you Eric. Jim?
Not being a math teacher, the simple answer would be zero. You know, in the past, you know, I've served on Cedar Falls Planning and Zoning Commission Board for 10, 11 years. Served on the district facilities committee for several years. Can't come up with a number off the top of my head. Cedar Valley Friends, or Cedar Valley Friends of Hospice Board, many other charitable boards around the community. You know, all of those teach you lessons and give you experiences that you can bring to the table at a school board, so.
Great. Thank you Jim. Jeff?
Again, I've not served on a school board. I have sat on the other side of the table during negotiations, but I would say that even during those times, I've managed to come out of those situations. They can be adversarial, but I've managed to come out of those and still be able to speak to the person who's across the table from me. And we manage to work on situations collaboratively and together and to find a common interest. We know that ultimately, whether you're on the staff side of the table or the board side of the table, that there, you have a common goal and there's one thing that we're after and that's to provide the best education we can for our students. Other than sitting on the opposite side of the table during negotiations, and that's a small part of what the school board does. I have served, as I mentioned before, by local president for two terms and a, for the Northeast Iowa Education Uniserve Unit, which is consortium of about 50 schools. This is my second go-around as president of that. And that includes most of the schools from Cedar Falls up northeast toward Decorah.
Great. Thank you. Sasha, your board experience?
Yes. So I have not served on a school board. I have served on a couple of other education boards when I was in Florida, when I was a teacher. And so I have some experience with what it is to help advance the goals of entities in my work with that. And I also would come to the board with a lot of experience in working together with boards to make education successful. I taught in an environmental magnet program in a high school in Florida that had a board of directors and I worked with them closely on getting grant funding and doing other initiatives that allowed us to be successful in teaching our students and bringing them what they need. And I also am involved here just recently with the board of the Volunteer Center for the Cedar Valley. And I look forward to hopefully being a bridge for some of the opportunities to make connections with the community for things like the CAPS program or other opportunities for collaboration between businesses in the area and you and I maybe and the school district, so.
Great. Thank you Sasha. Our next question from the audience is what would you say are the most important priorities for fund allocations? And we'll start with Jeff for this one.
The largest portion of any school budget is towards staffing and I obviously think that has to be number one. We do have different funds that pay for different things. We have, for instance, PEPAL funds, general funds and so on. So it's not as though it's one big bucket of money that we could decide, well, we'll cut a little back here so we can spend a little more here. But ultimately, it comes down to staff. We need to attract and retain good people.
Great. Thank you for that response. Sasha, what is your response to what would you say are the most important priorities for fund allocations?
Well, I would agree. I think that, that the people who are working directly with our students need to be supported and rewarded for the work that they're doing. And that includes both the teachers and the paraeducators. And so I think putting resources into helping them continue to do their work and, you know, if they're putting in extra time outside of the norm in order to accomplish some of these initiatives, you know, one of the things that I had hoped to get to in an earlier question was the initiatives that are currently underway in the district. The things like using the standards-based grading, those sorts of initiatives that are helping our students hopefully achieve and grow and learn at higher levels. Those sorts of things take time to be successful and they take a lot of effort and work on the part of the faculty and staff and they take resources to be put in to, to the mix, right? And so I think that those things, if we want those initiatives to be successful, they have to be supported adequately. And then the other thing would be facilities. I think that we also, in an effort to create learning spaces that will help students be successful, we have to be able to put the resources into those spaces. And so that's another area where Cedar Falls has done a really great job. And you go to any of the schools that are being renovated and you can see that happening. You look at Aldridge Elementary School being built, you see that happening. And this is the community saying, yes, we think that these things should be supported. One of the things that's coming up that's going to be really important is the high school. That'll be the next piece that needs to be addressed. So those would be the areas.
Great. Thank you Sasha. We'll jump down to Joyce. What would you say are the most important priorities for fund allocations?
Well, I would agree both with Sasha and Jeff in that, you know, our biggest amount that we spend is on salaries. And so when we go to Des Moines and we talk with our legislators about the supplemental state aid and increasing that, it, for the last couple of years, it's just been stagnant. And as our costs continue to rise, it's important for us as board members to be in Des Moines and to be advocates, along with our CFEA, our Educational Association, that we walked hand-in-hand to make sure that our legislators are aware of what the impact that they are having happens on education and how it trickles down to the classroom. The other thing that Sasha brought up too, is as we look forward or to the future of what the impact will be for the district to build the potential new high school and what that might look like with extending the one-cent local sales tax. And it's important for us to go down and be advocates as community members to ask them to extend that sunset or to do away with that sunset completely so that that pot of money can grow and it doesn't tie the district's hands as we look out to bonding in the future or our bonding capacity in the future. So I think, I think besides, not think, I know, focusing on our supplemental state aid and seeing growth there affects and impacts education greatly. And if we can go down with one loud voice, that's probably the biggest impact that we can make.
Thank you Joyce. Eric, what is your response to our current question?
Well, I very unoriginally have to, I have to echo Jeff, Sasha and Joyce and say that staffing is the most important thing in a school district's budget. As Jeff said too, we have to know, and I really think this is something we can try to communicate to the community, perhaps a little bit more or better, is this thing of the different pots of money. We can't just borrow from one to use in the other. School finance is something that people get degrees in. It's a very complicated system. And so, you know, supporting our teachers, yes, our staff is the most important thing. We can't, but we also got to understand, we can't save money on facilities to pay them more, that kind of thing. They're two different things. So anyway, to echo something that Joyce has said, you know, advocating at the state level, I think is super important. I'm interested in doing that as well. We need supplemental state aid, we need to extend that sunset on the one-cent sales tax. Those things are super, super important to our district. And we need the public to understand too, that if we don't get those things, we have to raise that money somehow. And generally, what happens is we have to raise property taxes for every bit that we don't get in supplemental state aid. So we wind up paying for it locally. And, you know, there's a lot of concerns about property taxes in the community right now. And this is another way that that's impacted. And so I'm interested in that conversation as well, that advocacy at the state level so that we can support our teachers.
Great. Thank you very much Eric. And Jim, what is your response to what would you say are the most important priorities for fund allocations?
School finance is a little bit of, in simplest terms, a convoluted mess. You have dollars here that can't be used here, you have dollars here that can't be used over here. So to allocate funds effectively and appropriately is a key component of what the school board does. Fortunately, in our district, we have an outstanding business director that we hope we can stick around for many years to come. You know, I'm going to, there again, be unoriginal and echo that your staff. Your teachers in the buildings drive the school bus and drive the growth of the students. They are the ones that are there every day impacting how your, how the students learn. So that, and even below that, not only your teachers, but your paras. You know, when you look at what they do with some of the students that have additional challenges and additional needs, what they do and how they interact with those kids, help those children achieve growth throughout the year. So those are some of the biggest things. We've touched on the extension of the sunset clause. I mean, right now, our state legislators have the opportunity to not only impact education in Cedar Falls, but statewide by extending that on a, it's a tax neutral to all of the citizens. So if we can get that done, not only does it improve the quality of education and our abilities in Cedar Falls, but that can impact students statewide. And I think ultimately, as anybody wanting to get into a position of school board involved in education, you know, yes, we want to impact our students locally, but to see students on a statewide level be able to achieve growth and higher levels of achievement is the goal of every board member and educator and administrator throughout the state. And right now, we're kind of waiting on our state legislators to achieve, help us achieve that.
Great. Thank you candidates for your responses. Our next question from the audience is as follows. What is your opinion of the new bargaining law for public employees? And we'll start this round with Eric.
Could you repeat it?
Absolutely. What is your opinion of the new bargaining law for public employees?
Oh, of the new bargaining law? Well, I feel like it took away the rights of our teachers to collective bargain in ways that have served the district well for decades. So I was, I was very disappointed in the action. I think that we now as a board can look at ways that we can, you know, support our teachers in the absence of that leadership at the state level. So that's something that I'm interested in doing is showing our teachers that we support them in ways that, and protect them in ways that they used to be protected by our collective bargaining laws at the state level that have been removed.
Thank you Eric. Joyce, your response to what is your opinion of the new bargaining law for public employees?
Well, first of all, in Cedar Falls, I have felt we've always had a great working relationship at the table. We've set across from each other, I've served on the bargaining committee for many years on the district side. And we have great conversations. And when we walk away from that table, we all walk away feeling good about what has taken place during that process. And when we left the last bargaining this spring, I felt that same way. And I think I said to our CFEA representatives, I said, you know, even though chapter 20 has changed, it doesn't mean that we're not going to sit down together and still listen to each other and still have conversations about what is taking place in Cedar Falls. I will say that I feel that there were several things that happened in Des Moines very quickly. I don't, I don't want to say that it happened behind closed doors, but it seemed like the train was rolling down the track and no one was going to stop it, even when we were calling and advocating for what was happening, education across the board this past year. And chapter 20 was just one of those.
Great. Thank you Joyce. Jim, what is your response to our current question?
To kind of coat tail off Joyce, you know, right now, our education, our public education system at the state level and at the national level is being pulled many different directions. What happened at the state level really took away an opportunity for staff and boards and administrators to sit down and collaborate together and continue to build relationships. In Cedar Falls, you know, for my understanding, being, you know, an outside third party, it's always been an amicable discussion. Have there been contentious moments, I'm sure. Have there been bargaining points, I'm sure. But yet, you know, it's taken away an opportunity for people to come together and work together and find the best solutions that benefit everybody. So it's, it's made a tough situation for a lot of people.
Great. Thank you for that response Jim. Jeff, your response to what is your opinion of new bargaining law for public employees?
Well, two minutes, right? That's all we get here for this. This is probably one of the primary reasons that I'm running. I was rather disappointed. I do, I do want to take one opportunity, in case I'm not elected, to disagree with Joyce just on one small point. And that was, she said that, that it felt like we didn't, we weren't heard. And I agree with the sentiment of that, but I also know there were good representatives and senators who did hear us in Des Moines and I appreciate their support, even if it wasn't on the winning side of that. It's, it is disappointing. I, you know, I know that ISCA is my professional organization and I go with ISCA. I've learned so much from ISCA and I'm proud to be a member. And it's not just about the bargaining with us. I also know that we've had school administrators of Iowa and the Iowa Association of School Boards often on our side and fighting for us and I do appreciate that. And when I say us, I'm sorry, I'm taking this a little bit personally, but... And when I say us, I'm sorry, I'm taking this a little bit personally, but this is one of the things that I think that, that is very undermining to what teachers do in our profession and to support staff as well. I, I do think that we have an opportunity to come out of this a little bit stronger, and I hope we do. And I do hope that we can show that it's beyond just collective bargaining, that as a school board member, I want to see that we can do everything we can to, to promote the trust that our staff has for our school. And I, hopefully we can do that at the bargaining table by keeping as many of those things that are permissive still in our contract and keep those things that have been prohibited from contracts, move them into our board policy. And so we can still keep that level of trust for our teachers and our support staff.
Great, thank you Jeff. Sasha, what is your opinion of the new bargaining law for public employees?
Well, I will echo the responses already given. I think it undermined the professional nature and the importance of the role that teachers play in our community as a whole, right? They are, they are performing a critical role for our community and they're doing it being, I think rewarded much less than they should even to begin with, right? I think that teachers should be one of the highest paid professions that there is because of the work that they do. And, and I say this as somebody who's been in the classroom and who understands and recognizes the kind of time and devotion and energy that you give to that work. So I think that those, the removal of those bargaining rights undermined that professional nature of the, of the work that, that the teachers and the paraprofessionals do for us. So I think it's unfortunate, but I agree that, you know, one of the things that I would hope to do as a board member is to be able to have those conversations and to do everything that we can on a local level to make sure that we are working together to raise up our, our teachers to the level that they deserve and also to advocate at the state level, you know, talking with our, our local representatives and getting out there to Des Moines and really making that effort to say, this is the work that's happening, this is what we need to be compensating these people for.
Thank you Sasha, and thank you candidates for your responses.
Hey, may I just respond once to Jeff's comment?
Sure.
Because we have Representative Kresik in the audience, and you are right. We had a lot of wonderful senators and representatives in Des Moines that really supported what we were doing. And I blanket statement said, Des Moines didn't listen to us. But the majority of Des Moines didn't listen to us. And I can say that Representative Kresik has always had his ears open and been very willing to visit with us and was a strong advocate for education and what was happening in Des Moines. And I still will say that same statement that I said before, the train got rolling, it got out of the house and it kept going and we couldn't stop it. So thank you for bringing that up. And Bob, I apologize for that and any of our representatives that supported education that are listening tonight, so.
Great, thank you Joyce. Would any other candidates like to respond again to that question or any other statements said? All right. Our next question from the audience is as follows. As a public school board member, you will be advocating for public education and adequate funding. There is talk of the legislator passing legislation that would give education savings accounts to families. What is your understanding of such education savings accounts and the impact on public schools? For this question, we'll start with Jim.
Education savings accounts, voucher programs, whatever you want to call them, will be taking money away from the public schools, plain and simple. What, you know, the argument is that why should my tax dollars go towards a education system that my students don't attend? Well, in a roundabout way, I would ask the same questions. And by doing that, you're also taking students out of a environment where there are checks and balances, there are accountability measures, there are standards that have to be followed. And in some of these alternative education systems, you don't have those checks and balances. You don't have those standards that will be followed. So, you know, the question is, is it the best use of dollars? You know, in my opinion, I firmly believe in our public education system. I believe in our staff and our buildings. I believe in our administrators. I believe in our school board members, that they best know how to administer a effective education to our students and wholly, wholeheartedly support our public education system.
Great, thank you Jim. Sasha, what are your thoughts on education savings accounts and the impact on public schools?
I have to agree that I think that the, those programs take money away from where it is needed in the public system. So I, public education systems are designed to provide opportunity for all students and to provide all students with, with a chance to get a high quality education that will allow them to pursue whatever it is they choose to pursue later in life. So if we move money away from that system, then we ultimately increase the disparity that already exists between the haves and the have-nots, I think is what ends up happening. So I think that as a taxpayer myself, I want my money going into the public system. And I can, I see that being an important piece of who I am as a citizen in this nation.
Great, thank you Sasha. Jeff, your response, same question.
I'm not a fan of vouchers and of course I look at anything that is presented, but just as though there are some streets in Cedar Falls that I don't frequently drive, that doesn't mean that I shouldn't pay taxes for those streets. I think that parents, we do already subsidize quite a bit of private parochial and homeschool education. And I want to make that clear, that if we're also going to subsidize it to this tune, one of the concerns that I'd have, especially in a homeschooling situation, we've seen situations where students are not, their welfare has not been primary in the focus. And we've lost a few, a couple of girls here recently, and I know you know about this. And I, and I've also seen some excellent homeschool students, some parochial students, but just because they're not going to public school doesn't mean that they should get a tax credit for that, no more than I should get a tax credit for my students who are already graduated. This is a communal effort and Cedar Falls schools and Iowa schools are not going to be well-served by vouchers or educational savings plans.
Thank you for that response. Let's see, Joyce, same question.
Of course, I don't support vouchers or educational savings accounts. I believe that public education is for everyone and we don't get to pick and choose who we educate. And I think that when you take dollars away from public education, all we're doing is eroding public education. We pay our tax dollars to go and support our schools and that's where it needs to go. And if I decide that I want to homeschool my child, that's my choice, but not at the expense of public education. I have a real strong concern too, that right now, this new, the educational savings account, there's no accountability tied to it, at least for right now, there's none. And that, that's a huge concern. If, if, if we allow students to leave public education, to go and be educated without any accountability, what happens when the going gets tough in eighth and ninth and 10th grade? When parents all of a sudden decide, you know what, I can't do this anymore. Guess where they're going to come? They're going to come back to public education and we're going to be the ones that are going to have to deal with that. Public education is for everyone and I don't support vouchers or the educational savings plan.
Thank you Joyce. And Eric, what are your thoughts on education savings accounts and the impact on public schools?
I'm also not a, not a fan of public, of education savings accounts, vouchers. And I suppose just to add to what everybody else has said, because I agree with everybody, I think that this is a philosophical thing and it's, it's a little bit larger than, than just education. There's, in my opinion, an effort to erode many things public right now and cast them as bad or somehow not as good as the private sector, which somehow, you know, performs services and does things better than the public sector in, in every way, you know? And I believe that really, as a community development professional, actually, this was, this was something that was central to my training, is that a democracy needs to have a healthy private sector, yes, a healthy civil society, and it also has to have a really healthy public sector. And those three things have to be there and they have to work together, you know? And we can't just think that the private sector is going to somehow magically provide things that the public sector is, is the only thing that's really capable of providing. Education is, is the heart of a community. It's the heart of our democracy, really. To me, it's a much bigger thing. And we have to support that, we have to support that for every single child, you know, not just those that can afford to go to a private school. And we certainly shouldn't take our public funds, taxpayer funds, to support private education. So I'm, I'm very much against educational savings accounts.
Thank you for that response Eric, and thank you candidates. Our next question from the audience is a two-part question. Representative Walt Rogers has introduced a bill to increase homeschool funding from 12 million to 240 million. Do you favor 240 million to be allowable to homeschools, or would you rather have 240 million allocated to public schools? Second part, do you think taxpayer money should be used to fund homeschooling versus that 12 million going to support public education? So just let me know if you need to repeat any of that, and we'll go ahead and start with Sasha.
Can you read the 12 million dollar part again?
Yeah, so second part, so, yeah, I can just do the whole thing. Yeah, that's fine. So.
Part one is stopped.
Let me tell you the story. So this audience member is asking, Representative Walt Rogers has introduced a bill to increase homeschool funding from 12 million to 240 million. Do you favor 240 million to be allocated to homeschools, or would you rather have 240 million allocated to public schools? This is the first part. And then the second part, do you think taxpayer money should be used to fund homeschooling versus that 12 million going to support public education? So Sasha, we'll go ahead and start with you.
Well, I think that the previous question was right along those same lines. I, I think that there's a danger in having students outside of a regulated environment in terms of their education. And as somebody who taught at the university level and saw kids come up to postgraduate studies, I experienced students who had been homeschooled and some of them were excellent, did very well, and they clearly had a lot of support from their parents who still were involved at the, at the postgraduate level. But there were others that were, were lost. And I think that Joyce was right on in saying that there's oftentimes kids that come up to a certain point and the parents just don't have the, the ability to continue on with them, and so then they come to the public schools and then they're not in the same place. So I think that there is a definite danger in that. And so that, that is an aside, right, in terms of supporting homeschooling. It is a choice. If people want to do that, they can do that, but I think that it can't be at the expense of the, the public system. So I do, I do not advocate funding going in that direction. I, I think that there is a place for multiple types of education, so I don't, I think there's a problem with parochial schools or, or other types of educational opportunities. However, I think that, that public funding belongs in the public hands, in the public system.
Great, thank you Sasha. Eric, your thoughts about the same question?
I, I think I, I really answered this in the last question, you know? In my mind, public funds are for public education and I'm certainly not against homeschooling. I'm not against private education, as Sasha's said, you know? I think that those things have a role. And as Jeff has said earlier, our public funds already support the, these activities, private education and, and homeschooling to some extent. So I'm not, I'm not fighting against that. I, I just don't think that we need to be adding any more to that. We've got plenty of challenges in our, our public school system as it is right now. And if anything, we need to be adding more to, in terms of fiscal and financial support to public schools and not taking it away and giving it to, to private schools or to, to homeschoolers, so.
Great, thank you Eric. Jeff, your response to the same question?
We do have, at Waverly-Shell Rock, and I'm sure the same is true in Cedar Falls, students who are largely homeschooled and they come in for services at our school, for instance, things like band lessons, things and other opportunities like that. And I think it adds to our school, I really do, and I think it, I think it's great for those students. The legislation though recently has reduced the accountability to, to homeschool students. And I think before we start spending the state money on that, then there needs to be accountability that goes along with that. I would also say that we talked about this, and again, it's hard to comment on any legislation that hasn't happened yet, but would anybody be eligible for this money? For instance, if I, are we essentially going to be paying people to keep their kids from going to school? And if that's the case, what would that look like and who would be the first people to take advantage of it? I don't know that it would always be the best qualified parent that would do that. And that would be one thing that would concern me, so I would have to absolutely be sure that there is some check on that. I would say, I'd, I'd certainly be willing to look at 240 million after we fully funded public schools to the level that we should. If we have 240 million dollars left over after we've made up for the lack of growth that we've had over the last several years, sure, let's do that.
Thank you. Joyce, your question, what is your response?
I could say ditto. I, I agree with, with everyone so far, and I would just say that, that I would ask Representative Walt Rogers to just not move forward with that. And those dollars, I think the first question is, would I like those dollars to go to public education? The answer is yes and yes. And that's where I think they should go. And the second question would be no, the second answer to that question is no. And I just feel that it's important that public dollars stay public. And to Jeff's comments earlier about those pots of money that already go to private education, we are already funding those initiatives, educational initiatives. And I think it's important that parents have choice, but I don't think that it should be at, at the expense of public education.
Great, thank you Joyce. And Jim, would you support increasing funding for homeschooling or bringing the funding back to public education?
I'm going to give you a little family background. Both my parents were products of public education. I was the youngest of five that went through 12 years of parochial education. I have a family member who homeschooled their three children. You know what? They didn't get any tax dollars. My parents worked hard, they did what they felt was right for us. Don't get me wrong, it served all of us well. And school choice is a choice. It is everyone's choice to educate their children how they feel is best. In today's society of being able to account for every dollar that goes through our state's hand, is it the best use of dollars? No. Because it's under the current proposal and the current infrastructure, it's not accounted for. We need to be able to account for how those dollars are used. We need to be able to account for the fact that those dollars that the taxpayers are contributing to education are being best used and we are seeing benefit and we are seeing growth in our students by the use of those dollars. So absolutely, I would support them to come back to public education.
Great, thank you for your response to Jim and to the candidates. I have one other question from the audience up here. If anyone from the audience would like to ask a question, now that you've heard what everyone else has contributed, feel free to write it down on a piece of paper and one of our volunteers will collect it from you. So our next question, who is in favor of increasing our taxes by 55% to build a new high school? So we'll go ahead and start with Joyce.
Well, I'll have to be, I'm going to be very honest. I, I believe that it's important that we build a new high school. I believe that it's important that we build a new high school. I think when we have a high school that is falling apart and that we have needs, our high school students have needs way beyond what the existing building can support at this time. And I think there are ways, as we move forward, for instance, what I talked about earlier is extending the sunset on the one cent or the silo. If we can have that happen along with, I know that our administrators and our, we actually have a community task force right now that is looking at ways that we can reduce the cost of a new high school and how we can package it so that it's more affordable to us. But I'll be very honest, doing nothing is not the right thing. It's just not the right thing. We are a community, and we are a community that deserves a better facility. Our educators deserve a better facility. And more importantly, our students deserve to be in a cutting-edge high school. And if you drive around the state and go visit some of those new buildings and see what's in those new buildings for those students, I don't, I'm going to use the words, we should maybe feel ashamed. I'm ashamed of what we have for a high school. And I'll stop there.
Great, thank you, Joyce. Eric, your thoughts? Are you in favor of increasing our taxes 55% to build a new high school?
I'm not, well, I'm not sure where the 55% number came from, but I'm actually surprised that it took us this long to get to this question, because I told you I'd knocked on 500 doors or more, and almost every conversation I've had has been about the high school. You know, that's the single thing that people want to talk about in this community. So it is the work that's going to be on the board's plate for the coming years, you know, foreseeable future. I believe that we need to do something to address the high school situation. I am also going to take a kind of a pragmatic approach to this thing and say that we have to likely pass a bond to support this thing, looking ahead down the road. We, even if we have the one cent sales tax, I believe we're still not, you know, going to have the funds to cover this thing. We just went through a bond issue where we had three different tries to get it done. The community's not happy, a lot of them, for various reasons. If we need to get another bond passed to do the high school, it's going to be another big issue in the community that we're going to have to deal with. So from, again, a pragmatic standpoint, I think that the only way we're going to be able to do this goes back to something I said earlier in terms of meeting with people face-to-face and really trying to identify what their concerns are, engage them, have discussions to talk about what can we do to address their concerns, to come up with a solution that 60% of our community can get behind. And really, at the end of the day, I'd like to view that as an opportunity to bring our community together and to get everybody behind something that we can all support. So, you know, no, I don't want my taxes to go up either, but we do need a new high school. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Eric. Jim, same question. Are you in favor of increasing our taxes to build a new high school?
Thank you for taking the 55% part out, because you can't
It was just what was on the card.
You can't have that number without knowing what the bond ask may or may not be. So that's conjecture on someone's part. In my opening statement, I said that education is the cornerstone of a community. Not only is the education system and the culture that it brings to it part of that cornerstone, but the facilities are part of it. When a new business looks at communities to move into, one of the very, very first things that they analyze is the school district, that their future employees' kids are going to go to. They look at it as a recruitment tool for bringing high-dollar employees to this community to pay taxes and build new homes. If you look at what's going on right now around the location of the new elementary school, the growth out there is unbelievable. CF Proud promoted that that was going to happen. The firm that the district hired for, to do the projection about the district, said that that was going to happen. So far, that's all coming true. It's all coming to fruition. Our tax levy rate from that bond are going to begin to decrease earlier than projected because of the growth this community is feeling. So do I support a new high school? Absolutely. Like I said earlier, my son goes to the high school for chemistry class. They're not going to be able to be in their classroom all the time because there's not enough lab space. Just last week, I toured a new high school that's just south of here. They just opened up a brand-new wing. Part of that entire wing is a dedicated science wing. We don't have that. Our students don't have that opportunity. Teachers drive education. But you know what drives teachers? That's the facilities we put them in. We cannot recruit the best teachers to educate our kids without having the best facilities. They are a recruitment tool and an economic driver in the community, and I would absolutely support it.
Great, thank you, Jim. Jeff, same question?
It's hard to follow that up, because that's exactly the way I feel that. If we want to grow the community, we do need a new facility. It doesn't make sense to keep pouring money into an older building that's virtually dilapidated. I student-taught there 30 years ago, and the building, it has a little bit new on the facade, but it really isn't that different. And I know what it's like to teach in a building that has undersized classrooms, and the reason why you can't do something a little more innovative is you physically don't have the room to do it. So that'll be one of the challenges that we'd have to meet with a new school, is that it would have to have the square footage to accommodate what we need. And it's also going to accommodate growth. One of the first things that a realtor will talk about when someone is looking at a community is what is the physical quality of the school buildings? And it's one of those things that does attract people and employers, as Jim said, to a community. We've been talking a little bit about the flat level of state supplemental aid. And one of the things that's going to do is drive some of these smaller schools to consolidate or out-and-out close. And if that happens, there are going to be people who are looking for a new place to educate their students. And I want that to be a high-quality high school. I think that's what's going to bring people into this community. And I think that's what's going to continue to fuel our growth, as Jim said. It's one of the cornerstones of a community.
Great, thank you, Jeff. Sasha, same question. Are you in favor of increasing our taxes to build a new high school?
Okay, well, I'm in agreement with the group. We don't seem to disagree on much, this group. I had the opportunity to tour that high school as well, and there are some serious deficits in that building. And the kind of deficits that just putting additional money into to fix up or put Band-Aids on are not going to fix, right? That's not going to be the problem solver. The kids that are coming up through our beautiful facilities that are becoming more beautiful by the moment and then arriving at that high school are primed to be prepared to go off into this 21st century world where they will be going on to college or careers that they need preparation for, right? And part of that preparation is providing the spaces that will allow them to do the kind of work that will be innovative and creative and collaborative, right? And so those kinds of spaces do take very specific designs. And as a science teacher, I experienced that firsthand as well. And I lived through the renovation of a school where I was teaching and know how uncomfortable that can be and impractical that can be. And, you know, you get some benefit on the other end, but when you have limited space, you can't truly create the facility that will be the best for our students. On the other hand, I agree with Eric. There are a lot of concerns in the community, and I think that it's going to be really important as board members to get out into the community, to talk to people, to recognize the concerns, and to do the best that we can to be fiscally responsible in how this building is put together, and to think about the practical things that people are concerned about in terms of the location of the new high school, so.
Great, thank you, Sasha, and thank you, candidates. We have a few more questions. Our next question, the person that has asked it acknowledges that maybe facilities could fall as one of your answers, but they're looking for something in addition. So what do you see as the largest educational challenge in the coming years? And we'll start with Jeff.
The schools that we grew up in are not at all the schools that we need for our children, that we need to be forward-thinking, and that what served us well is not going to serve our students well. And that's probably our biggest challenge as educators, as a school board, is to be forward-thinking and make sure that what we are giving them are things that they need. We talk about some of the essential things that all students see. I'm sure many of you have already heard about the four Cs of education. They talk about creativity, communication, collaboration, and critical thinking. And those are the skills, and they're hard to impart, they're not easy to do, but those are the skills that we need to do. Yes, do they need some tech skills? Yes. But I know as a tech teacher that I don't use a book because it'll be outdated within the next year. So what our students need is not the same as what we grew up with. And I think that'll probably be our biggest challenge, is to be forward-thinking.
Thank you, Jeff. Sasha, your response to the same question?
So I think that the way students learn today is different from the way students have learned that I know certainly that I experienced school when I was young. And I think we have to be able to expand the way we offer instruction and the way that we present information to students so that they can assimilate it in whatever way is best for them, you know? And so this is a challenge. This is something that I see happening in the Cedar Falls School District with teachers working on different methods of getting students engaged, you know, spaces like the makers' spaces, where they get to innovate and be creative, or collaborative spaces that allow them to work together in teams to, you know, to solve problems and come up with solutions and sometimes even to come up with problems that are a part of their learning process. The other challenge, I think, that is very real in this day and age is information overload, right? There's so much information out there. And so that, your textbook comment is absolutely right. I mean, textbooks are kind of a thing of the past, and we have to be able to help students know how to find good information and how to process it, right? And how to think about things in a very concept-oriented way instead of memorizing a bunch of facts that they then give back to the teacher on an exam of sorts. And again, I see this happening in Cedar Falls with looking at learning-based assessment as opposed to the traditional type of assessment, right? We're really moving in a direction of helping students to process information in different ways and grow as a result.
Thank you, Sasha. Jim, what do you see as the largest educational challenge in the coming years?
Biggest educational challenge before the district here statewide, regionally wide, nationwide is we're educating our students for careers that we don't know that exist. Five years ago, look at the UAV drone market, didn't exist. It is now a multi-billion-dollar recreational and commercial industry across this country. So how do we educate kids for stuff that we don't know what it's going to be? It used to be that you'd go to school and you'd get on the path to become a CPA, an architect, an engineer, you'd take an AutoCAD class that would transition through. You can't do that anymore because our world is so rapidly changing and ever-involving. So what we have to do is prepare these kids to be well-rounded, critical thinkers, problem solvers, in a broad, general base, because the careers we're preparing them for, we don't know what they're going to be. We don't know what, five years from now, I mean, you know, I'm not that old, I'm not that young either. You know, I remember when the first cellphones were around. It was a great big bag phone that you can't even purchase anymore because it's regulated by the FCC. It's an antique, and it's 30 years old. Now, everybody has a computer in their pocket. That's the kind of evolution that we have to prepare to educate our kids for. And to me, that's the biggest single challenge that sits before our educators or educational systems, is how do we build an education for these kids that a fifth grader today is getting prepared for a career that doesn't exist, in a market that doesn't exist? So how do we give them the real-life skills to transition into those positions?
Great, thank you, Jim. Eric, what do you see as the largest educational challenge in the coming years?
So, excuse me, Jeff talked about education now being different than what we knew when we were younger, and both Sasha and Jim have alluded to the same sort of thing, that we live in a different world, I think, now. And, you know, education is different, needs to respond to that. I would also say that our population is very different now, and I see that as one of the biggest challenges. So the demographics that we're dealing with are not what we had years ago, you know? That's a very, very big thing that not a lot of people are actually aware of, you know? Southdale, interestingly, I believe, has the largest, in this district, the largest concentration of English-language learners. I hope I'm not misstating that, but I believe that it at least has one of the largest outright numbers of English-language learners in our district. You may not think of that, you know? We also have, as the trend is in the country, we have a growing divide between the haves and the have-nots, and that, we're not immune to that here in Cedar Falls, you know? We have a very affluent community in some parts, we also have a poor community in other parts. So those bring a lot of challenges into the classroom. Having taught in the classroom, I know firsthand those challenges, and those things aren't getting better or easier. I think they're becoming more and more difficult, and the tools that teachers have and support, the tools the teachers are given and the support that they're given in dealing with these kind of things are supercritical if we're going to continue to educate all students at a high level. And I think back to the purpose of public education, it is to educate everybody, so.
Great, thank you, Eric. Joyce, same question for you.
Well, I'm going to, I agree with everyone, but I'm going to add just another component. I think that it's some of those soft skills, teaching our students that it's okay to put down their device. How many times have you been caught up in a text message war back and forth, or an email going from one to another? And you lose, you lose that personal touch. Being, to teach them to be able to sit down the phone, turn off the computer, pick up the phone, go over and actually make a face-to-face, have a face-to-face conversation with someone. Teaching those children or students that when they're out, that they can actually look you in the eye, be able to shake your hand, some of those skills that I know our CAPS program is teaching. Leader in Me teaches that all the time. Character counts. The leadership opportunities that we give in the buildings, I think, are becoming more and more important to students as they move through, because they're not learning them, they may not learn them all in the environment at home. And so we're there to help teach those kind of skills. It's those skills, those soft skills, that employees are really, employers, excuse me, are really looking for right now. And we want to make sure that we, that when they graduate from Cedar Falls High School and go to college, that they have those skills in order to succeed as they move forward. And those are just a small, just a couple other things to add on to what everybody else has said this evening.
Great, thank you, Joyce, and thank you, candidates, for your responses. Another question from the audience is as follows. What will you do to ensure equal quality of education for all soon-to-be seven elementary schools for facilities, attention, and stigma? And for this question, we'll start with Jim.
Equality across the district is always an issue because you have certain districts that have a higher income base versus other districts that have a lower income base. As a district, we can't impact that. We can't change that without major realigning of things, and I'm not promoting that. But what we can promote is that our teachers are effectively given the tools and the ability and the training to make sure all of our students, district-wide, whether you come from a million-dollar home, or you're renting an apartment, or you're transient, I don't care. It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. All students in our district are entitled to and have the right to a quality education. Go back to a statistic that I said earlier. You know, 55% of the, of the teachers in the Cedar Falls School District have a master's degree. They're in buildings, buildings scattered throughout the district. All of our students are impacted by those teachers. So, you know, I, I think what, what can be done to ensure that the same message, the same quality is administered throughout the district is to make sure our teachers are given the opportunity to collaborate through the PLC process. And personally, I would even promote expanding that on a larger basis from just a building-level basis to giving the teachers opportunities to collaborate on a district level. So that way, Southdale and North Cedar and Lincoln and all of the school's teachers have the same information and are given the same opportunities to give all of our students the best opportunity to achieve.
Great, thank you, Jim. Joyce, what will you do to ensure equal quality of education for all soon-to-be elementary schools? All soon-to-be seven elementary schools, sorry.
Well, I, I would, I agree with Jim. Well, first of all, we don't want to move every student all over just for equity's sake and to, and, and I also have faith in the district administrators and leaders to provide the supports that we need in those buildings. And we, we do that day in and day out in our six buildings now. Adding a seventh building doesn't make it look any different, except just the physical structure is new. But by the time we get Orchard Hill completely remodeled or renovated and North Cedar completely renovated, we will have equity within those buildings. And again, I think we do our best as a district to provide equity to each student by who we have in the building as far as our building principals, our counselors, our paraprofessionals, and our classroom teachers. And we provide the supports that we need for each one of those buildings.
Great, thank you, Joyce.
Sasha, same question. So I think it does start with the facilities and that is a, a process that is underway. And, and when I visited with the principals this summer, there was a lot of enthusiasm for what's to come. There will be some times of, of struggle during the process. And I think there needs to be a lot of support of those schools and the people working in those places and the students going to those schools during the process because it is uncomfortable when it's under renovation. I think that we need to do a really good job of celebrating diversity. Diversity in terms of what the schools have to offer, what the students have to offer, what the, what the faculty is doing with the students. And I think each school will have its own flavor and its own wonderful successes that we need to highlight and, and share with the public so that we are celebrating those differences and the achievement in each of those places. And then I think one of the challenges that I did hear from a couple of the principals, you know, all of them commented on how much support they get from the, the community. And the parents and the families are all very involved. But for some of the schools, there are parents who are both working full-time jobs and just don't have as much time to be there at the schools. And so I think working on maybe recruiting volunteers or people to come in and serve in some of those functions at some of those schools that don't have parents with the ability to give their time in that way would be a helpful thing to do. That, the same thing goes with, with fundraising. You know, some PTAs are able to pull in lots of money with their fairs and their carnivals, and other ones have a harder time with that. So finding ways to help in those regards would be important.
Thank you, Sasha. Jeff, your response?
You know, I've been a Cedar Falls resident long enough to, to remember what the old Cedar Heights building looked like. And it was, it was not pretty. I, I, I thought it was even dangerous at, at one point. And I am so glad that that is torn down and we built a beautiful new school there. My kids went to, to Orchard Hill. And if you know what Orchard Hill looks like, it's very, it's very similar to North Cedar. And, you know, we've seen Lincoln and we've seen Southdale grow. And, and we've seen the, the, the Cedar Heights School. And, and they're beautiful, but then you're sitting back and thinking, gee, what's going on in my neighborhood? So I, I think we can't ignore that there is possibility of a stigma. And, and I do think we need to address that. But I also have gotten to know quite a few of the staff at those buildings. And I know that these are wonderful administrators, teachers, counselors, support staff that work in those buildings. And I, the, we, we can't ignore that. We, we need to address the fact that, that there is something of a stigma to, to some of these buildings. And I'm so glad to see this addition coming to, to Orchard Hill and the work being done at North Cedar. I think it's really going to make a tremendous difference to those schools. I was speaking to an administrator recently and we were talking about the staffing at the new school. And it hadn't even occurred to me, and I think the board and the administrators have done a really good job of addressing this, that they want to be sure that there's a balance of, we're, we're not going to take the cream, so to speak, of, of the best-educated, most-experienced teachers and administrators and move them all to that building, even though they may want to be there. We want to make sure that we have a good staff in all of our buildings. And I think we, we need to make that clear. But I'm really anxious to see what happens to North Cedar and, and Orchard Hill and the improvement that's going to be going on in those schools.
Thank you, Jeff. Eric, same question. What will you do to ensure equal quality of education for all soon-to-be seven elementary schools?
So I, I finally get to, to answer the question back from the beginning that I said I had one more point to make on. So that was about student achievement and, and addressing the achievement gap. And the fourth point that I had back then that I didn't get to had to do with the idea that equity, which is what this question was, equity is not the same thing as equality. So taking, I'll come back to that. Taking a step backwards, though, I am thrilled that we are finally addressing these, the facilities issues across the district. So that in addition to our PLC process having brought curricular and instructional equity throughout the district, so that students are getting the same basic things in different classrooms around the district. Now we, we've addressed our facilities across the district with the, these elementary upgrades and new elementary school upgrades to Orchard Hill and North Cedar, which were needed badly, Orchard Hill and North Cedar. Moving forward to ensure equity, I'd say, is to, to talk about this thing at least a little bit, that equity and equality aren't necessarily the same thing. When we have students that have higher needs than other students, we may need to give them more resources in some cases. And that's okay to, to promote equity. Giving all students exactly the same thing, equal resources, doesn't promote equity necessarily. We may have students that need more and, and they deserve more resources. We may have some at a really high level that need challenging that deserve more resources. So I just wanted to bring that up, that equity and equality are, are two different things. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Eric, and thank you candidates for your responses. We have time for one more question from the audience. The question is as follows. As a school board member, what are three words that would describe your approach to your community role? So this time, we'll go ahead and start with Jeff. So three words.
Can I squish some of these words together?
Hyphenate them?
Hyphenate them.
Yeah.
One would be, I want to be collaborative. So I think that would be one. I think we need to work with all of, all of the stakeholders. We need to work with parents, we need to work with community members who aren't parents. We need to work with administrators, support staff, our teachers, and other roles and administrators, and, and our school board, and we need to make this work together. And this is going, this has to be a team effort. So collaborative would be one. So listener would be probably the, the second one. I want to hear what people have to say and be able to react to that well. And the third, hopefully dynamic. Something that, that we're moving forward, that we're changing.
Great, thank you, Jeff. Same question, Eric. As a school board member, what are three words that would describe your approach to your community role?
I guess the first, I'd say engaging. I talked about this with earlier questions. I'd really like to be actively engaged with the community, you know? Not just asking our staff to do that, but I think that the board can take, not to say they haven't in the past, I, I believe the board does a pretty good job of that. That's just something I'd really like to do personally. I want to be out there, talking to the community on behalf of the school district, engaging with people. So engagement is one. Jeff said listening, I, I'm going to say that as well. I think that we, we can't necessarily just have our mind made up about what we're going to do and, and, and tell folks that this is what is going to happen. We need to listen to people. People want to be heard. We need to give them that opportunity to, to talk to us, you know? And, and be civil about it. So that's another thing. And, come up with something quick. Advocate, advocate, advocacy. I'd like to be an advocate for education for our district in this community and at the, the state level as well, which we've talked about in the past. You know, we, we have to be in Des Moines, you know, physically there, talking to legislators, advocating for the resources that we need here in this, this school district. So I'd say advocate.
Great, thank you very much. Joyce, same question.
I, my first one was advocate. I thought maybe I was going to be able to sneak it in. Of course, advocating in Des Moines, but just advocating in the community and for education in general. My second one was collaborative. Sorry, Jeff, you, I think you said that. And just to be collaborative, not just with our board members, but with community members, with the CFEA, just to be a, a great collaborative partner when it comes to education. And the third one, and I believe I'm really pretty good at this, is I'm an act, good at, at an active listener. I can sit down and I can listen to you and I am able to take your concerns and communicate those back to you or to another stakeholder. And I, again, I pride myself on being a good, active listener.
Thank you, Joyce. Sasha, same question. As a school board member, what are three words that would describe your approach to your community role?
Okay, well, I also picked collaboration because I do believe that as a board member, I'm one of seven. And so we work together as a team. But I also am really interested in this interface between community and the school district. And I look forward to finding ways to involve the community and what's happening in our schools. I, I combine two words, enthusiastic supporter. I was going to say enthusiasm, but I, I want to support. I want to support the, the teachers and the staff that are working hard at our schools. I want to support our students and our families that are working to, to get their students through the education that they need. And then service-oriented. I, I know that this position is a, a service position. I, I would be here to meet the needs of our students and of the community. And so that would include the, the listening piece, the being out there, the hearing from people and recognizing what needs to be done and then moving forward in that way.
Great, thank you, Sasha. And Jim, same question.
Well, I'll be original and start off collaborative. You know, it, like Sasha said, you're, you're not a, it's not a board of one. I have never served on a committee of one. And to be one board member, there's going to be times where my opinion may differ from someone else. And one thing that I think is so missing in some, some levels of local politics, some levels of state politics, is people can't sit down and talk to each other. You cannot come up with a solution through compromise. And through compromise comes growth. And collaboration is a huge part of that. And through collaboration comes problem-solving. I mean, here tonight, we've talked about, we have to teach our kids problem-solving skills in our schools. As a board, we have to show problem-solving skills because through budgetary issues, through facility issues, through staffing issues, whatever it is, we have to compromise on things. And we have to come up with solutions that are best for the district and best for our students. We have to be able to remove ourselves and our personal opinions from those situations and do what is best for the district. Open, I like to think I'm a fairly approachable person. Anybody has a question, feel free to reach out. I travel fair amount on a day-to-day basis. I might not get back to you that day, but I will. And, you know, part of being open is honest. I'm going to tell you what my opinions are, what my thought, thought is. We're going to disagree at times, and I fully understand that. But you know what? I'm okay with that because that starts the collaborative process. And finally is, I've been accused of being a doer. Give me a task, I will grab onto it and move forward. And I will find a solution and I will work with others, others to find a solution. So those are the three things I'd bring to the board.
Great, thank you, Jim, and thank you candidates for your responses. We are out of time for audience questions. Thank you so much, audience, for contributing tonight. If your question didn't get asked, feel free to connect with our candidates after the forum, and I'm sure they'd be happy to respond. So now it is time for closing comments. We'll start with Joyce. Our candidates each have two minutes to give closing remarks.
First of all, one thing that I want to do before, I'm going to use my two minutes. I'm going to thank our retiring board members that are not going to run again. I'm going to thank Susan Lance for her time and her many years of devotion that she's given to our board. I want to thank Dr. James Kenyon for his 25 years on the board as he leaves the board. I also want to thank Dr. Doug Shaw for his term on the board. They all come from different backgrounds and different walks of life, but they've been a true gift to our district and I would be remiss this evening in not thanking them. With that, I want to thank the League. I want to thank the Cedar Falls Education Paraprofessionals for your support this evening. I want to thank CFEA, Channel 15, for having us here. I really, we have a great slate of candidates. You have something to really think about before you go to the polls on September 12th. I would like your yes vote on September 12th for Joyce Coyle when you go that day to vote, or if you vote absentee between, between now and the 12th. I am running to fill a position of a Jim Kenyon that is resigning from the board. So there'll be three seats available and an additional seat to fill his position. So I want to make sure that that's understood very clearly. I want to thank all of you for your time because you're here this evening because you're interested in education and you're interested in what's happening to our students and what's happening in Des Moines. And I can't tell you from the bottom of my heart how much I appreciate that. So thank you for having me this evening. Thank you for our moderator and thank you for our candidates. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Joyce. Eric, your closing remarks?
Thank you, thank you, Katie, for, for moderating this tonight. And I thank you again to the League of Women Voters, Cedar Falls Education Association, and to the Cedar Falls Association of Education Support Personnel for hosting this event tonight. It has been a pleasure to talk through all of these issues tonight with, with the slate of candidates. And again, it's an honor to be alongside all of you, so I appreciate that. I just want to say something that I didn't quite get to in my opening statements, and that is that I believe deeply in the power of community. I'm dedicated to being in this community now for the long haul. We, my, my wife and son and I, we left for a couple of years to do a stint international teaching in Central America and came back, moved right back into our same house in Cedar Falls and realized that this is, this is a really special place. Not that we didn't already know it, but that experience really drove it home to us that this is where we want to be for, for the rest of our lives and to raise our, our child here, who is a seventh grader at Pete Junior High. I, I believe in that power of community and I, I want to work with the community to bring us together, to solve whatever issues we have. I believe that that's really the only healthy way forward and, and that it is something that we, we can accomplish and we can do. We can address any issues that are in front of us if we work together. So that collaborative spirit that's come up in several people's comments, I believe deeply in that as well. And I just really appreciate the opportunity to, to serve the community, this school district, in being on the Cedar Falls School Board. So thank you. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Jim, your closing remarks?
I'd like to echo the sentiments of thank you to everyone involved, the candidates, the community members that are here, the community members at home. My life is invested in this community. I'm a third generation. My grandpa's name is on the plaque out here. He was sitting on city council when they built this building. My father was a businessman in this community that served through Rotary and Lions and Kiwanis and on and on. I was brought up in a way that the only way you can make your community better is to be involved. You know, I don't come to the school board with an agenda. I don't come to the school board saying that I have the answers because I don't. I know that it's a steep learning curve. I know that school finance is a tangled web. I know that there's a lot of curriculum things, policy things that come along. But I'm willing to learn those things. I'm willing to take the time and put in the effort to learn those, to make our community a better place. Because ultimately, the actions that the board and some of these people will make as board members may not affect us, but it can affect our kids and it can affect our grandkids. And, you know, my stint on this earth is a short time, and my goal is to leave it better for the next that come behind me. I want my kids to have better opportunities than I had. And part of that, and I've said it before, is education is a cornerstone of a community. Cedar Falls has a longstanding tradition of that. My mom was in one of the first graduating classes from the current high school. Unfortunately, it looks about the same as it did 60-some years ago. So it's aged about as well as she has. Sorry, Mom. So, you know, for that, I ask, I'm not a politician. You're not going to see my name on yard signs. I want you to vote for me because of my track record, what I've done, and my dedication to the community. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jim. Jeff, your closing remarks?
Again, thank you to CFEA, to CF Support Staff, and for the League of Women Voters. And I looked at the list of other sponsors that don't always get mentioned with League of Women Voters, and thank you for the opportunity for this public debate, this discourse that we have. I think it makes a huge difference in the people that we choose to represent in us. The one thing I will say, when I go to vote on September 12th, I am sure I'll vote for Joyce because she's essentially running unopposed. But of the others of us, I'm really not sure which three I'm going to pick, including myself. This is, we are really lucky to have so many great people, I think, here running for a school board. And if nothing else, whether or not you vote for me, please get out and vote. We have some really good people, and this is a wealth of riches that we have here. And I'm very proud to sit among these people. My kids, Keely is, those of you who know Keely Orvis, she is now a labor and delivery nurse and moving back to Ames. My son, Sam, he's in his second year of med school. And that start that they got was due in large part to Cedar Falls Public Schools. And I'm so grateful for that opportunity. And I want to be able to pay that back, and I want to be able to help our community grow. And I do believe the way to do that is through our school board. So thank you. Vote September 12th.
Great. Thank you, Jeff, for your closing remarks. Sasha, your closing statement?
Well, I think this evening just confirms for me and my, my just amazement at this community. I am so grateful for the opportunity to be here this evening and do this. I'm grateful for this amazing panel of colleagues. I think that Cedar Falls School District will be in good shape. I agree, no matter what the outcome. My husband and I, when we came here, felt immediately welcomed by this community. We felt like we came home. And it is, I've been looking for the right opportunity to give back, figuring out where I could use my experience and skills to give back, and this seemed like a good fit. And I'm convinced I'm going to give back to this school district in some fashion, no matter what. But I would be honored to serve on the school board. That would be a great privilege. I will say that I know as somebody who hasn't been here that long, I do bring a kind of a fresh perspective from the outside. And I have time. I currently serve as the CEO of my family, which is a time-consuming thing, but it's very flexible in terms of scheduling. So I do have time to offer. But it is, it is a privilege to be here. It is a privilege to be amongst all of you. And thank you again to the League of Women Voters, Cedar Falls Education Association, the Cedar Falls Association of Educational Support Professionals, and to moderator and to all of you. Thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for voting on September 12th.
Great. Thank you, Sasha. Thank you, candidates. It is inspiring to see the passion that you have for this community. So if everyone here and at home, if you could join me in a round of applause for our candidates for running. So then, thank you, everyone, for joining us here tonight. Thank you to everyone who joined us at home. Thank you again to our candidates and to all of our sponsors. And be sure to get out on September 12th to the polls and vote. Thank you again, and have a great night.